Cycle in place, a crouch.
Hey Craig, your mic is too long.
Thank you.
It looks like everybody is here, so let's go ahead and get started. Welcome this evening to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on August 11th, 2020. And if we could please begin with a roll call.
Councilmember DeLusso.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Here.
Mayor Skilman.
Here. Thank you. And then if everybody could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Alright, thank you. Now move on to item four, approval of minutes for our special meeting on July 22nd. And, well I guess we need to, since we're doing roll call, I will take them individually. So first we'll start with the special meeting on July 22nd.
Madam Mayor, it's Councilmember DeLusso. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes.
This is Councilmember Harvey, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember DeLusso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes, and hopefully my dog does not also cast a vote. Okay. Then we'll move on please to the regular meeting from July 28th.
Uh, this is Councilmember Harvey, I'll make a motion to approve the July 28th minutes.
And this is Councilmember Landman, I'd be happy to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, please take a roll call vote.
Councilmember DeLusso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes. Thank you. So now we'll turn to item number five, announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted City Council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the City Council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The City Council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the City Council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statement that the City Council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. Please see details on the web at kattatcity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixol.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. It's our top priority to provide you with prompt and comprehensive customer service, and we continue to offer all city services. However, in the interest of public health, City Hall is currently closed to walk-in traffic due to the current health officer order. During this time, our services have temporarily transitioned to phone and web-based, as well as appointments by request. Staff continue to be available to answer your questions 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m., Monday through Thursday. And like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600, or online at info@kattatcity.org. Sorry, that's actually by email. Um, if you have an emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611, and of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixol, Nixol, and Nextdoor. And with that, we will turn to item six, which is a proclamation. And I believe we have Commissioner Tricia Allmand online as well, so I will go ahead and read the proclamation, and then I will pass it over to Commissioner Allmand if she would like to make a few comments. So this is in honor of Women's Equality Day proclamation. Whereas in August 2020, we mark the 100th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, which secured the right to vote for women. And whereas in 1976, the Sonoma County Board of Supervisors established one of the first commissions on the status of women in the state of California, with the purpose of promoting equal rights and opportunities that enhance the quality of life for all women and girls, and addressing issues of discrimination and prejudice that negatively affect women in Sonoma County. And whereas women now constitute nearly 50% of our workforce, the majority of students in our colleges and graduate schools, and an increasing number of primary breadwinners. And whereas during the current COVID environment, work, uh, women workers in Sonoma County disproportionately in the lowest-paying jobs suffer higher rates of unemployment. And whereas, even with the gains women have made, significant work remains to be done to ensure equal pay for equal work, and especially regarding improving opportunities for lowest-wage workers. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City of Kattati proclaims August 26th, 2020 as Women's Equality Day, marking the 100th anniversary of the enactment of the 19th Amendment, celebrating the achievements of women, and recommitting to realizing gender equality in the City of Kattati in all areas of employment. And of course, we will have the actual proclamation mailed to you. But with that, I will see if Commissioner Allmand would like to make a few statements. You don't have to, but I just wanted to give you that opportunity if you would like.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, City Councilmembers, for this proclamation honoring the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. A hundred years ago, you didn't have the right to vote in the U.S. if you were a woman. Women's Equality Day celebrates the passage of the 19th Amendment, which granted women the right to vote on August 26, 1920. The women's suffragists movement was successful in large part because a group of passionate individuals banded together to activate change. Activists, activists used their voices and traveled a rough road to rewrite the old rules that were written by and for men that no longer worked. Sadly, change didn't happen overnight for the suffragists, it took decades, but we consider to be basic rights today, such as women's right to vote and own property, are the result of the hard work and conviction of these trailblazers. We've come a long way, but we still have a long way to go. Women make up roughly 51% of the population, yet only 20% of Congress. Less than 22% of city mayors are women. Thankfully, in Sonoma, we exceed that. And we've yet to have a female commander in chief, however, as of today, we at least have a vice president-elect, Kamala Harris. These days, we're seeing more female candidates run for office than ever. In addition, women make up the majority of voters in this country. Since 1980, the percent of eligible women voters who have said they voted has been higher than the percent of men in every presidential election. Having a government that more accurately reflects the population would help push legislation forward to better reflect our wants and needs, from supporting equal pay to advocating for mandatory parental leave, to greater protection against sexual harassment to gun safety. This is vital at a time when we still have a gender pay gap that widens for minorities. We still don't have mandatory paid parental leave. We need more women in leadership positions to make decision-making, to have decision-making powers. Your Sonoma County Commission on the Status of Women has increased representation and participation in recent years in Sonoma County via our Women's Voices Listening Sections and Survey. This has included listening to incarcerated women and working with service providers to assist these women in being more successful upon release from jail. In addition, our Empowering Women Sessions have been encouraging Sonoma County women to apply for boards and commissions, as well as run for office. Equality is not a female issue, it's a social and economic imperative. In fact, the McKinsey Global Institute reports up to 28 trillion could be added to the global GDP if we achieved full gender equality by 2025. We cannot wait for equality to happen, we have to make it happen. It is each of our responsibility to drive change. Educate ourselves on political issues, get to the voting booths, run for office if you feel called to do so. On Women's Equality Day and every day, let's rewrite the rules that no longer work and create new ones together. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here tonight and for all of your continued hard work in this very important area. Alright, and with that, we will move on to item seven, presentations. And for the August 2020 financial update, I will turn it over to Angela Quarter.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and fellow members of the public. So we meet once again to go over a brief financial update. So, at the council meeting on June 23rd, you adopted our fiscal year 2020, 2021 budget, as well as the estimated balances for fiscal year 1920. I'm gonna shorten that up. Based on our projections for both revenues and expenditures, as we reasonably estimated at that point in time, due to these very tenuous times. So again, those were estimates. During the presentation of the budget summary, we also committed to the council and to public to come back with you with these timely updates for our significant revenue sources. So when we provided, uh, we also provided a budget update on July 14th, where we detailed out the same information in form as presented here, where it is a summary of the continued sales tax receipts for the month of June. Excuse me, through the month of June at that point in time. The presentation tonight is the same fashion as we provided, um, with the subsequent sales tax receipts that we received in July that were pertaining to May. So just to take a step back again, as to what these important revenue sources are and why we continue to report out about them, our general fund is the fund that provides most of the non-enterprise-type city services. This is where the main operations for recreation, public works, administrative services, community development, economic development, public safety, as well as city infrastructure is all funded from. So we like to provide this graph as just a snapshot of the revenue sources that fund the city's ability to provide all of these services. So overall, sales tax and property tax account for 78.7% of all the revenues that provide all of those services. And the voter-approved revenue tax measure, this is Measure G right now, um, that, sales tax alone makes up approximately 28.35% of the revenue. This just shows how vital the sales tax is to the city, and why we're so supportive of our local businesses, and we'll continue to closely monitor the effects of COVID-19 on our businesses, their ability to pay the sales tax, uh, to make the revenue that comes back to the city so that we can provide these services. But here's where we are. Our sales tax and voter-approved local revenue update. This is just a reminder, um, payments are made to the city by the CDTFA approximately two months after the period when the sales tax is submitted. So the sales tax receipts for April were received by the city in June, and the sales tax receipts for June will not be received until August. So, for the sales tax, um, this is badly burnt sales tax, we adopted a budget of 1.9 million, and as of July, we had received 2.1 million. This means that we are already over our budget estimate by approximately $133,000. So, if the sales tax receipts for June are consistent with what we received for May, then we would have approximately $400,000 worth of receipts in excess of that budget amount. This is really consistent with what we're also seeing with the voter-approved local sales revenues, where we conservatively adopted a budget of approximately 2.1 million as of July, and we have since received 2.2 million, leaving receipts in excess of budget of approximately 150,000. So if this continues, the receipts for, and the receipts for June are consistent, we would have approximately $350,000 of receipts in excess of budget, leaving us to a combined, total of revenues in excess of budget of 750,000. So, the budget was all set by estimates, and we continue to work with the team to understand and track the estimates. We've, uh, just met again with our consultants to evaluate, oddly enough, looking all the way back to Q1 2020, as well as seeing how that reflects what adjustments might be coming down from CDTFA, and to see what caused the differences from where we budgeted. So it's probably due to the increase in the county pool, we're still seeing that same change is being consistent, we're getting more county pool, uh, receipts in than our conservative calculations had allowed for. Um, and our projections previously provided for, um, um, the CDTFA to extend payment plans, um, for sales tax submissions. And we know that from the CDTFA, we know that the second quarter 2020, uh, sales tax advance was a result of lower tax receipts due to COVID-19. Statewide, the overall total payments for June 2020 decreased by 13% compared to June 2019. So that does not mean that the payments for the City of Kattati have that, we should expect that same exact decrease, but overall, the payments statewide did decrease in June 2020 as an average across the state by that 13%. So other contributing factors, um, to the previous reopening of businesses, so again, that happened sooner, and now we're shutting back down again. But for the City of Kattati, we have a mix of businesses here that have remained fairly consistently open as our main, um, source of revenues. And again, that plays in both to the pool, the county pool, anything that's going through Wayfair, that's that online retail, that online shopping, we're still getting a piece of that which is going to continue to grow, as individuals who maybe don't feel comfortable going to the store and shopping in the store, but they still get their deliveries shipped here in Kattati, we're getting a piece of that sales tax through that county pool. And we also have the, um, major industries that are still continuing to grow. So I also in this, um, presentation provided a graph of the sales tax by the major business groups, so you can see where our different business groups are fitting into these overall, changes by the quarter. And you can see that home improvement, as well as food and drug, are those major industries that are continuing to do really well, considering the situation that we are all dealing with right now. Um, other industries are declining but improving, like, uh, building and construction, while we still see the declines in fuel, and general consumer goods, restaurants, hotels, which all those, um, TO2-related and sales tax related to leisure are expected to continue to decline. I just wanted to end again with a quick snapshot of other key information that we continue to track, and that's our total cash and investments balances. In order for a city to continue to remain functioning and efficient, we have to not only manage our inflows and what our budgeted expectations are of those inflows, but also manage our cash on hand, and making sure that we're doing, uh, proper investments, both in our portfolios, in line with our policies, but also in line with what projects, um, and, um, maybe prepayments we can do to reduce expenditures down the line. So the city as of July 28th had over 16.7 million in combined funds, of which over 40, uh, over 90%, excuse me, was invested according to our investment policy for those non-cash balances, in order to earn some reasonable rate of return. So in conclusion, that's my financial update for August. Um, if there's any questions, I'd like to open it up.
Alright, thank you. So I will check in with the councilmembers now and see if anybody has any questions they wanted to ask Angela about the presentation. And thank you very much, Angela, for, for that presentation, it's great to see we're continuing to go in good shape. Uh, and I see Councilmember Landman has your hand up, go ahead, Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. That is, was a very good presentation, I just wanted to ask if you could give me a little more illumination on the likelihood of significant deviance, uh, for June payments, from consistency in May. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the variability right, as you described it statewide, the estimate is a thing due to increased use of state tax deferrals, the potential is to go up to 13, 14%. So would that be kind of like a worst-case scenario, most likely for us? And what would the expectation of? And what would the expectation of, or realistic expectation in your estimation so far?
So yes, so 13% would be an estimate as to a decrease in our sales tax receipts. Again, we are already above budget. But that is what we could anticipate not receiving. But again, that's why we conservatively budget in the first place is because we weren't sure which businesses were going to take on those deferrals for the sales tax, which is now continuing. So we, it's also unsure how many are going to have prepaid. And we might have a couple of adjustments coming through that because the state has been fairly persistent in doing additional payments or getting out cash sooner. And so there's not a confidence level as to a percentage change that we would have in this final payment because of their new system and how they send out payments at this point in time.
That's very helpful. I get the sense that there is unsurprisingly a lot of variability financially right now for a wide range of reasons. But this is helpful. It gives me an idea of where we're at, which fortunately, thanks to being conservative in budgeting, and thanks to your department for that. This puts us in a place that our worst-case scenario is something certainly manageable for some of the things we're considering later. So that, that's helpful to me to know that. So thank you for giving us this update. I do appreciate it.
I see Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation, Angela. I find it very helpful. I think in these trying times when we're all trying to figure out what we can do and what we can't do, I think that it's really important for us to receive these monthly updates because, as you said, things are changing rapidly. And that's the only way we can really make more or less real-time adjustments. I know in normal years, you know, we typically only have a, you know, semi-annual update. So this is really helpful, given what's going on. I do have one request. On the graph where you showed the revenues, the two, the property tax and the Bradley Burn sales tax, the colors are almost identical. So I did notice one that was printed out. It almost, it looked like it was all the same. So I would ask that if it's possible, could you use two different colors next time so it's obvious? That would be my request.
Absolutely, that will be done.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the report.
Okay, and it looks like that's all for questions. So thank you very much, Angela. I really appreciate it. I know it's extra work, but it's very helpful for us to know where we are in the scheme of things with all the uncertainty. So thank you very much for doing these now monthly. And now we will turn to approval of final agenda, item eight. And I'll ask City Manager Adina if there's any changes to the agenda tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. No proposed changes for tonight.
Okay, great. And with that, we will turn to item nine, citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar item. So I'll do a brief reading and then we will open it up for the public. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. And with that, I will turn it over to our city clerk, Lauren Burgess, and see, I'll ask her to give some instructions to the folks online.
Thank you, Mayor. And for all of our attendees listening tonight that would like to comment, to make a public comment, use the raise your hand icon on your smart device or desktop computer, or dial star name if you are using just your telephone. Please listen carefully for the mayor or myself to address you by name or phone number and for the audible Zoom notification that you have been unmuted. Once you begin your public comment, your three minutes will begin. And with that, Adrian Lobby, go ahead.
Hi, good evening, council members and anyone who's listening. My name's Adrian Lobby. I am a member of CORE, Kattati, Kattati Organized Against Racism. I attended the special meeting and thank you all of you council members who also attended. I'm sure that it was interesting. It certainly was for me. And one of the things that really struck me was our survey, which we had done previous to that meeting. And we put it out for four days and we got 71 people who responded, which was quite a lot of enthusiasm for our survey. We heard a couple of very disturbing stories. One that was about police tormenting a black man and eventually ended up, so that he ended up in, not in jail, but getting something on his record, lying so that that would happen. And a couple of women, black women, who came downtown to watch Halloween festivities and were interrogated and talked, so directly by police that one of them has never returned to downtown Kattati. She lives just a few blocks from there. Finally, we heard the difference in how white people and people of color respond to our town. So that 8% of white people feel that they've had racist problems with the police, but a much greater percentage of black and brown people have had problems with the police. These are really disturbing things. And I know we gave you some ideas and we heard a lot of positive comments from the council members about moving forward on it. And I'm just here again to say it's been a couple weeks. And I'm hoping that you were as disturbed as I was at these stories and at the survey results. We have people who are waking up in the morning in Kattati and not feeling safe here because of our police force and because of the racism that we all swing with. We really need to do something about that. We need to do something so that when you wake up tomorrow morning and you feel however you feel, you think, what can I do to make things safer here in Kattati for everyone? And, you know, take the next step. Because I'm really looking forward to that moment when I wake up one morning and say, we all feel safe here. We all feel like Kattati is our home and this is our place. Thank you so much for listening to me.
Marjorie Kropchier.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, good. Many of us can recognize active racism when we see it. I'm going to be reading from an article from a series in our community voice called A Teachable Moment. It's entitled Anti-Racism. It was written by Cassandra Mae Albaugh. "Racists Don't Bother to Hide, Active Racists Don't Bother to Hide Their Prejudice Thoughts, Discriminatory Behaviors, Or Antagonism Towards Those Other People." But what is passive racism? It means conscious and unconscious maintenance of attitudes, beliefs, and behaviors that support the systems of racism without openly advocating violence or oppression. It's when we buy into stereotypes and characterization of others and because we do, we pass them on to our friends, neighbors, and children. A favorite example, a mother walking down a sidewalk holding her child's hand. They see a black male approaching. Mom squeezes the child's hand a bit harder, maybe even crosses to the other side of the street. She never said a word, didn't actively support racism, but did communicate passively to her child to be afraid of black males. Maybe, maybe not. It takes more than a single incident. The more the mother engages in these subtle passive behaviors, the more it reinforces a system of racism. How about passive anti-racism? Some believe there's no such thing. Others think it's a matter of degree, that you don't go from being non-racist to an active anti-racist. It takes a lot of work, energy, and commitment to be an active anti-racist. It goes beyond a protest, having difficult conversations, making donations, or a social media post. An essential part of becoming an anti-racist is learning, looking inward, making a resource list to read or watch, listening closely to voices doing active work. No one is born a racist. We learn racism and we can unlearn it too. The choice is ours. I have looked inside me. And I challenge you, look inside you. Thank you.
Laura Spurts, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Hi, I'm coming in from Kattati Organized Against Racism, CORE. And I want to thank Adrian and Marjorie for their wonderful comments. Santa Rosa has recently committed to enacting their Racial Identity and Profiling Act data collection a year early. And they've also recently had a presentation about the Kahoots model for having mental health crisis responders respond to certain 911 calls. And several of the board members have endorsed that model and have been supportive of it. Those were two of the four things that our group CORE had asked for, the other two being that the city of Kattati do a comprehensive survey about racism in Kattati and that the city of Kattati form a working, an ad hoc working group so that residents of Kattati can work on these kinds of issues. I would love to see some of these things start coming up on the agenda at the city, at the regular city council meetings. And I'd like to know what actions are happening and what actions you guys are taking to get some of this stuff going. We have a really, really enthusiastic group of people in Kattati, and several of you talked to me individually about how much you wanted to see more civic engagement and more citizen participation in city government. And we've got a group of people who are just dying to do something, to make improvements and help. And we'd really like to participate. So I would urge the city council to put the formation of an ad hoc working group onto an agenda very soon and start really talking about what concrete steps we can take. Thank you very much.
Danielle Delario.
Hi, this is Danielle. I go by Daniela in Espanol. And I'm also a member of Kattati Organized Against Racism. And I just wanted to echo so much of what Laura, Adrian, and Marjorie all commented about. You know, we're still here and we still really want to help create change in our small city. And we are looking to other cities in Sonoma County and, you know, seeing some small incremental changes. We hope that Kahoots program that Laura mentioned is a crisis response program out of Eugene, Oregon, and it's getting a lot of attention in Santa Rosa and actually nationally as well because it's one of the first programs of its kind. Even though it's 31 years old, you know, it's actually saves, it takes the burden off police officers to respond to crisis calls, conflict resolution. They can do welfare checks. They can do domestic violence, mental health issues, homelessness issues. And it actually saves the city of Eugene and Springfield. It saves them $8.5 million. It only costs $2.1 million. So it's a program that I'm hoping that we can look at more closely. And in Santa Rosa, they're definitely enthusiastic about it. Chief Navarro, as well as the mayor, they're both really looking seriously at the program. So I'm hoping that somehow we can include Kattati as well. And yeah, the other thing that's been recently talked about and is now hopefully going to be on our ballot in November is the Evelyn Chitam Effective Iolaro Ordinance. So that's our community oversight. We're going to try to actually get funding for that in Sonoma County to do oversight of the sheriff's department. And I'm hoping that we can make that happen as well in Kattati. So thank you so much for being here. Thank you for listening. And that's it, I yield my time.
Mayor Skilman. Looks like that will be all for public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you very much for, all of you, for being here and for your comments tonight. I know that we are looking to move forward on the CORE requests and our city manager has been busy looking into what our options are. So we should have some good answers for you soon. So thank you very much for attending again tonight. So now we will move on to item 10, the consent calendar items. We've got...
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Delasso. If, if no items are being pulled by any council members, I would be happy to make a motion. So I'll pause to see if anybody is pulling anything.
I see a hand up from Vice Mayor Moore.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. I just wanted to make a notation of what I think is just a typo on packet page 53. When it talks about on item C, and in the first paragraph, it talks about the contract work has been completed and scheduled with a budget. Project had a total budget of $750,000 million. I think that was just a typo on there. But other than that, I have no other questions or I don't know that we need to pull item C to make that correction.
Oh, Mayor, I can confirm that is a typo. It's 750,000.
Okay, and I was just double-checking. It doesn't look like it's in the actual resolution. The budgeted amount in the resolution is correct. So we are okay with that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Lammon. I do have to say, if that wasn't a typo, a lot of our long-term concerns for the city would go away. Unfortunately, I guess it is a typo. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harvey, I would be happy to second the motion for the consent calendar.
Oh, I think we're still waiting for Councilwoman Delasso to make his motion.
Oh, I thought he did make it.
That's correct, yeah. No, I said I'd be happy to make a motion.
Oh, happy to make it.
If we didn't have anything pulled. And I think if I would have got that motion, if I would have made that motion before the vice mayor said anything, maybe we would have had $750,000 million available. But it's a moot point at this point. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve items A through E on the consent calendar.
Then I would second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Delasso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes. Thank you very much for that. And we will move on to item 11, direction on future agenda items. And so I will pause and see if there are any hands raised by council with any suggestions for future agenda. All right, not seeing any and knowing how quick my fellow councilmembers... Oh, Councilmember Harvey.
Um, I just, not necessarily an agenda item, but I'm wondering if maybe when City Manager gives his city manager report, I think it would be helpful to those on the call to kind of go over the things that he has been doing to kind of go over the things that he has been doing about the comments that were made because I know he has been busy as can be working on some of those things, so it would be helpful to do that. Not necessarily an item at this minute, but some of them may become that.
Okay, perfect. Anybody else? All right, see, I'm pausing longer now. This is good. All right. Great, so thank you. We'll move on from item 11 to item 12, public hearings. And for the first item, introduction of an ordinance for the city council... Okay, I'm not even going to read the rest of that. We're going to turn it over to Craig Scott. See, I should have looked and checked the title before I started speaking. Go ahead, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. Craig Scott, Public Works Director and City Engineer. The city of Santa Rosa operates the Laguna Water Wastewater Treatment Plant, which serves approximately 230,000 residents in Santa Rosa, Katati, Roder Park, Sebastopol, and unincorporated areas of Sonoma County. As the operator of a sewer collection system, the city of Katati is responsible for meeting state and federal regulatory requirements and needs to revise its sewer codes from time to time to reflect changes in those regulations. The city of Santa Rosa recently revised its sewer code to incorporate changes in the Environmental Protection Agency's pre-treatment program requirements. This has prompted the city of Katati to revise its code to remain consistent. Martin St. George is the environmental compliance supervisor with the city of Santa Rosa, and he is here with us tonight to present in more detail the changes to the Katati's sewer code, which again, these changes mirror those that were made by the city of Santa Rosa for the pre-treatment program. So with that, Martin, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, and can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Skilman, and Vice Mayor Moore, and council members, and members of the public this evening for allowing me to participate in the process. Again, I'm Martin St. George, and I will be presenting a presentation or ordinance amending certain sections of Katati Code Title 13 public sewers of services. Next slide.
And Mr. St. George, your volume keeps going in and out, so I don't know if you can get closer to your microphone, please. Thank you.
We will work on that. How's that? Okay. The reasons for the code edits. We had a recent local limits study, and it has been approved, so that was part of the presentation I'll be sharing tonight. Another part will be the EPA required changes from previous audits that we had to the city's pre-treatment program. Something to remember, an EPA-recognized pre-treatment program, our expectations for any treatment plant that has over 5 million gallons a day of water being discharged to it, which we qualify for here at the Laguna Treatment Plant. Significant industrial users are the name they give industry in the pre-treatment program, and if you discharge over 25,000 gallons a day, then you qualify as a significant industrial user. And then there are federal categories. There are over 50 federal categories that have different potential to discharge certain pollutants into the collection system. These are metal finishers, or chip manufacturers, or oil refineries, porcelain enamellers, and I just wanted to give you a little terminology in what it means because it's going to come back as we discuss this a little further in the presentation about what it means to be part of an EPA pre-treatment program. And then there's also a new federal category for dental discharges, which I'll explain at the end of the presentation. Next slide. So why change local limits? I think it's important to know maybe how we come about getting a local limit, and that is the state water quality board and regional water quality boards give us permits to the treatment plants to discharge, and our treatment plant, the Laguna Treatment Plant, discharges when we discharge into the Laguna de Santa Rosa. And the whole idea behind the local limits is to make sure that we're meeting our discharge limits, and how you do a local limit study is you take that discharge limit and you back calculate through what the plant can remove and loadings of pollutants and some things like solids, the plant removes almost all the solids, and some metals are more conservative, they just pass right through. But statistically, there is a factor associated with these, there's a factor associated with growth in the system, and you end up with a big pie of how much of a certain constituent you can divide between the residents and divide between the industry. And the last time they did this local limits study was in 1990, and there were a lot of assumptions made based on that time. Our industrial flow in 1990 was 2.71% of the total flow, and now you can see the industrial flow is pretty much in half, 1.44% of the total flow. Assumptions that were made in 1990 in the local limits study are pretty key to why we made changes. It was new, local limits were, it was the first time around for most of the discharging agencies and sanitary districts and cities that had treatment plants, and so they were, some were conservative. Ours was very conservative and used very strict guidelines, and they developed the limits, and we went on from there. And the limits were developed based on the data of sampling back in the 80s, the late 80s, and so it's, the sampling data from that time had, was a little rougher and coarse compared to the sampling analysis that we have today. We can see 1,000 times lower in detection limits. So some of the numbers that we didn't see, we could have seen potentially a lot lower, and as these detection limits lowered, we saw lower and lower non-detentions. So, and again, there was just some variances. Getting into other items that have changed, in the 1990s, right after the local limits study was done, the domestic water purveyor here along the 101 corridor implemented corrosion control, and this corrosion control kept copper and zinc from leaking out of pipelines. And so there was a lot less copper and zinc going to the wastewater treatment plant because of this corrosion control. And then over the years, some of the industries we saw had product substitution, which we saw that with X-ray and photographic technology going to digital, and it really took a lot of silver out of coming to the flow to the wastewater plant. And again, we've seen water conservation in these last 10 years, and just the basic assumptions about putting everything but the kitchen sink into a local limit. We've gotten more sophisticated, we see what works better, what doesn't work, which I'll touch on as we go through more of the presentation. Next slide, please. The brief history of local limits study, the city conducted this study in December 2016. It was recommended in one of our audits that we do this study as well, and we presented the results to the subregional technical advisory committee in March 2018, and got the nod to keep moving forward, presented to the Board of Public Utilities in Santa Rosa in August 2018. Again, encouraged to keep moving. The regional board gave us their approval in July 2019, and we put it out for public notice for the regional board in August of 2019, and came back with only three comments that were positive comments, so it was quite pleasing at that point. The Santa Rosa, after going to Board of Public Utilities again, the Santa Rosa adopted the code edits in November 2019, and that's where the regional partners, we let the regional partners know that now it's their time to move forward, which brings me to being in front of your council members tonight. Next slide. So the local limits that increased, you can see, these were a direct result of changes in some of those presumptions that were made. The industry was going to grow back in 1990, whereas the residential sector did grow, the industrial sector, as far as significant categorical industrial users, did not. The metal finishers, there are half as many metal finishers now as there were then, and there's half as many chip manufacturers in the regional system as there was then. So you have less players, same amount of pie, you get to have a little bit more of that pie, is basically what we're looking at. So cadmium went from 0.04 to 2.2 milligrams per liter, copper raised from 0.2 to 1 milligram per liter, nickel from 1.51 to 3.0 milligrams per liter, silver from 0.17 to 0.5 milligrams per liter, and zinc was increased from 1.63 to 2.0 milligrams per liter. Now, the copper and the zinc, that was a direct result of the corrosion control program and some of those manufacturers leaving the area. Silver, that's that X-ray and photo processing, you know, change that went over to digital. There's a technology that really changed, so silver was allowed to be raised as well. So next slide, please. The local limits removed, biochemical oxygen demand, total suspended solids, and total keldol nitrogen. Since we implemented surcharge billing on waste strengths and waste streams from industry that are higher strength, and we measure biochemical oxygen demand or BOD, we measure total suspended solids or TSS, or TKN for total keldol nitrogen, we charge by the pound for these, and as a strategy, we found these to be much more prohibitive than any limit. And so we did remove these from the local limits. And antimony, beryllium, and thallium, we just didn't see coming out of our dischargers or coming into the plant, so we took those off the list. Hexavalent chrome, we do test for total chrome, and hexavalent chrome is included in that, so it's a redundant test. And in some of those categorical industries, we do still sample for hexavalent chrome, but it's only a couple of tests, rather than doing a test for every metal finisher we go to that doesn't need to have the test run. Selenium, we also don't have appreciable levels in our system, so we did do away with that limit. And total toxic organics was thrown in in the very beginning to local limits just to have an organics limit, and the reality is, it's a literature-based limit, it wasn't even statistically-based in limit. And local POTWs are starting to pull this out of their code because at the suggestion of EPA Region 9, it is not a very defensible number because it's literature-based and it wasn't calculated for your specific POTW. Now, you might say, okay, you're giving away some safety factor here, safety net, and that isn't true because the industries that typically would be discharging a total toxic organic are these categorical industries, and they have the exact same limit as our local limit. So we're really not losing anything. And it's important not to have more limits in your local limits than you actually use because you still have to sample for them, and it's a waste of resources on the inspection side and also on the laboratory and the laboratory cost side. So it's, because we're not losing any oversight for compliance, it doesn't make sense to keep. Next slide, please. We needed to clarify some local limits from the original study, and these were groundwater remediation local limits that were never meant to be used for significant industrial users, and through code edits and changes over the years, these needed to be re-edited this time around as it was identified as not being totally correct in the code. So we now have groundwater remediation limits for total petroleum hydrocarbons, which measured the gas of diesel, and also for the benzene, toluene, ethyl benzene, and xylene compounds. We also revised the halogenated total toxic organic compounds list to represent what that list should be. And then this last bullet point on this slide is for waste hauler program was expanded to increase the area to include outside the county for hauled septic waste, and this allows for septic haulers north of us to have a resource to be able to offhaul and offload their hauled waste and potentially not take shortcuts that may hurt the environment. So we wanted to make that available as a resource for the haulers. Next slide, please. As I, there are the EPA code edits that were found, and these are scattered throughout the Title 13 code, and you see some in the definitions, there's some minor corrections with faulty references, a new permit type added, and a few expanded lists. The prohibitions were changed. I do bring out number 18 because we used to prohibit all these substances the pool has followed upon, the condensate, the DI, and the groundwater, from going into the sanitary sewer, but that's when it was acceptable for them to go into the storm drain. And apart from acceptable now for any of these to go into the storm drain for various reasons, you know, some are more debatable than others, but there are many different factors now identified that hurt our ponds and streams and waterways that we really need to take recognition of and make sure it doesn't happen. So these can now go into the sanitary sewer. And, oh, and the pesticide list, the prohibition list, there was a half a dozen pesticides missing from that list, and we ought to go back to it. Next, please. And then, as I mentioned, there's a new federal dental office rule, 40 Code of Federal Regulations 441. We implemented in the regional system in 2010 a dental amalgam separator program, which is basically what we're talking about here. We needed to make a few changes to the codes, and we needed to do a little bit, do another survey, but otherwise, we fully implemented the federal program. It was almost turnkey when they actually implemented the new requirement in the Code of Federal Regulation. So it was good to know that the regional partners were very supportive of our work with the dentists, and it was also nice to work with the Redwood Empire Dental Society, and they were very helpful in implementation of this program as well, and we've seen significant reductions in mercury because of it. And that's my final slide, so questions?
All right, thank you very much for the presentation, and I will turn to the council members, see if there are any questions. I see Councilmember Landman. Go ahead, Councilmember Landman.
Thank you very much for the presentation. It's funny, I believe to the last council meeting, I mentioned something about the presentation being one of the more technical ones I have countered, and I probably shouldn't tempt the universe because then I have this one in my pack for the next meeting. But all kidding aside, there was one thing that troubled me, I wonder if you could walk me through because I'm not sure I'm quite getting it clearly. And this is statistically to do with limits on metals. Okay. More specifically, the metals that we do have and still do have some producers of, still some businesses still do that, such as I remember copper, silver. I'm not quite clear now that because business, we generate these, have not increased to the level we thought, I'm not clear the rationale why then we're saying it was okay to rather largely expand these numbers with the remaining businesses that remain there. Knowing that these metals, certainly copper and silver, I know can have some pretty significant impacts depending on level in the environment, why would we go this direction instead of just maintaining this 30-year-old standard and keeping something arguably much safer for the watershed?
There are a few answers to that, but, I mean, at the very core of it, the local limits are to protect the Laguna Treatment Plant... limits are to protect the Laguna Treatment Plant and the discharge. And, and the local limits were calculated in a way that they were calculated through the federal EPA guidance documents, that have basically been around, the same documents have been used since the 1990s. And it isn't changing the risk or the potential to remove metals at the plant. The only thing this was looking at, what were the drivers back in the 1990s, and what happened to the various metals, or dischargers of the metals, or dischargers of various constituents? And this, in your specific question, you're bringing us back to the metals. Well, the overall pie for the metals, it didn't change of what needed to be allocated, but the people who were in, members of that pie, were cut significantly. We have half the metal finishers, half the chip manufacturers, and plus other sources that were contributing heavily to those, those metal numbers, such as the product substitution with X-ray. I mean, silver, more of the silver was coming from photo processing and X-ray processing than it was from our industrial base. And that was identified through the sampling and the data work that we, the data analysis work that we did. The corrosion control was a big contributor to reducing the copper and the zinc that was being discharged. So it's between the various different factors. We weren't giving up any safety or any, let's see, we weren't putting at any risk to the plant that we would have loadings coming to the plant that are going to cause violations or hurt the Laguna de Santa Rosa in any way. It was, you know, we wanted to maintain the data, so that we would have a safe operating plant, a plant that, and the plant is well-run, and it can handle these new allocations to the less businesses, if you will, the lower number of businesses that are out there, it can handle these numbers. And what you kind of don't want to do, in one sense, is local limit yourself right out of having any businesses come in at all. And if you compare us to the rest of the Bay Area, and Page 37 of the study, this local limits change still puts us a little bit lower in many cases, or right about the same as many of the other watersheds and POTWs in the area. So it's not, this isn't a risk, I mean, I, I've made a career out of working here and for 18 years, and working on these, these local limits is, you know, I don't want to put this plant at risk.
So, a better way than, I think you've made this clear to me, and I appreciate that it sounds like it might be better to understand it, is this does allow, because we have less manufacturers than we used to, for them to admit a little more, but that is not something that's increasing the total that's being discharged, because the plant is able to deal with this and make it go away. So a reasonable limit for the number of business we have allows a little bit extra, so it's more per manufacturer, but it's no increase to us discharging to the environment, which was my main concern. Is that a fair way to describe it?
You are more articulate, I am the chemist.
Yeah, well, I don't know, I don't know if I'll go with that first part, but I'll agree with you on you being the chemist, because I know that's not me. Thank you, that was very helpful, because that was one thing that I found concerning a little bit, and knowing our history with the watershed and how this county works, and I was surprised to hear it, this makes more sense now.
Thank you.
And I see Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up, go ahead, please, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Thank you for that presentation, Mr. St. George. I was kind of piggybacking on what Councilmember Landon was talking about, and the question that came to me was, if we had less players, why would we want to increase the amount allowable to be discharged? Did we, or were the stakeholders in this program, our participants, requesting a higher levels? And was there, I mean, is it, what number of particular businesses might that be, if you have that information available?
In particular, for Katari, there is one categorical industrial user that you have in your town, and there's a dozen in the, a dozen in the regional system. No one was lobbying to raise the local limits, although when some heard that we were going down this investigative path, they said that it would be a good thing for them, it would help them to be more competitive, but that was not the motivation for making changes. As I said, a lot of, a lot of it, and the safety and the data, is going back to the beginning and realizing that the non-detects that were averaged in were 1,000 times higher than what we saw in the years to come. So the data really let us know that there was a lot more capacity at the plant to handle discharges, because we weren't seeing even close to any sort of concern levels of metals coming into the headworks. So, we had the initial thinking that, you know, we probably could raise our local limits and reallocate, I mean, not, not raise the total coming into the plant, but raise the concentration that each of the fewer industries could discharge. And, so, you know, that's where there's a certain amount of intuitiveness that we started with, that as we looked at the data, the data bored out, that, you know, we weren't giving up safety with increasing the concentration levels. You know, we're keeping the loading, the pounds, the total loading, isn't going to change. It's just the concentrations have been, have changed. And also, as we sampled these industries throughout the years, a lot of the industries that are discharging, they've implemented product substitution, they've implemented recollection and less wasteful products, because a lot of these chip manufacturers and metal finishers realize that if you discharge a metal, that means it's a meddling waste, and that it's going down the drain. So even, it's in their interest with the boutique, a lot of the boutique players that we have here locally. We have a couple of large players, but for the most part, they're boutique players, and all that, all those things affect their bottom line. So, to say that anybody was lobbying us, no. To say that some showed more interest than others, once they heard we were going down this path, yes, I think that's a fair assessment.
Thank you, and then another follow-up question to that is, these standards were initially incorporated in 1990, is that correct?
Yes.
We've gone 30 years, and now we're addressing these and allowing for a greater level of discharge, because we have, we found that those are relatively safe levels that we had there, and we're not having the amount of volume that we anticipated we might have. If there were to be a concern, or on a scheduled basis, when would we, we might potentially address this down the road? Would this be something we would look at in 10 years, in 20 years?
Well, that's an excellent question. We had done so well with our discharge and our pre-treatment program, that we were actually allowed to go several permit cycles without doing a local limit study. But we will be doing local limit studies now, every permit cycle, and they may not be as exhaustive as this, and there were, you know, just as a minor point, there were some local limit studies along the way, and for the, for the conventionals, BOD, TSS, TKN, back around 2000, there was a study on copper and lead and nickel and mercury that was close to that same time. So we've had a few, but every NPDS permit renewal, we look at constituents of concern or pollutants of concern that, and we look at what the numbers that were coming into the plant for metals and the numbers going out of the plant, to see if any were close to our limit or of concern, and the, we haven't had any issues there. So, we will be, but we will be doing them more often. And to answer your question, if an industry comes into town and we see that their constituents maybe aren't represented in our local limits, we can always write something in their permit to, as something that can control the compliance of that industry, and until we have a local limit to address it. So we also have permits, and we can revise a permit for these significant and categorical industrial users at any time. So if we see a problem, we see something coming up, we can, we have tools to quickly react to it, and then we have long-term tools, as in the local limits and the code, to react to it.
Thank you very much. That certainly gives me a little bit more, a greater level of comfort on that, knowing that we can address that, should the need arise, and it wouldn't be necessarily, and have to be only at that permit period. So, thank you, Mr. St. George.
And I see Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up, go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. St. George, it was a great presentation. I guess my question is, is would you consider it a best practice to, when the permit is being done, to reevaluate this? I know we haven't done it in a while, and you said there were some individual things, but would you, would it be fair to say that it should be a best practice to do that, when the permits are done?
We will be doing it when there is a new, every cycle for the NPDS permit that the Laguna Treatment Plant operates under. From this point forward, we will be. As a best practice, and that's, it is a best practice, but when your, when your system's running and you're in compliance, and you're meeting your regulatory obligations, then the EPA and the regional boards have been more willing to, you know, not have to force the expenditure and the overall study. But as I said, we've done lots of screenings and studies along the way. Because we started, well, we had the recommendation and the audit from the EPA, and also because we saw the, all the different data from the past, we're starting to review it and look at it, and looking at the makeup, the change in the makeup of our industrial base, and looking at all the different conservations and product substitutions, we realized that, you know, we really, you know, we had to get a new local limit study in and see where it took us.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any more hands raised, so I will open it up for public comments, so we can see if any of our attendees have any comments on this item.
Mayor Skilman, at this time, I see no raised hands.
Okay, thank you very much for checking. And with that, I will bring it back to the council.
Through the mayor, if you are looking for a motion, and we're past discussion, I would be happy to provide one. This is Councilmember Landon, I'd like to move, we introduce an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Katari, amending and restating chapters 13.34 through 13.38 of Title 13 of the Katari Municipal Code, to maintain compliance with federal pre-treatment program provisions.
This is Councilmember Harvey, I'd be happy to second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'll ask, Warren, could you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember DeLiso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Landon.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes. All right, thank you very much for your time and for the presentation, Mr. St. George. And with that, we will move on to Item 12B, Administrative Enforcement of Public Health Orders. And for that, I believe I'm turning it over to our city manager, Damian Obed.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, this item is regarding administrative enforcement of the public, county's public health orders. So, on July 28th, at the city council meeting, the council reviewed and discussed Snema County's proposed ordinance, I'm sorry, proposed enhanced education programs, and coordinated violation reporting, and also potential urgency ordinance that they were seeking direction from the Board of Supervisors on at that meeting. From that meeting, the, from the discussion at that meeting, the administrative fine schedule was modified on the commercial side. And so, county staff was given direction to return on the August 6th, 2020 Board of Supervisors meeting, to bring forward an urgency ordinance allowing for administrative infractions of county's public health order, with resident, or I'm sorry, individual violations that set at $100, and commercial violations in three tiers, so tier one is $1,000, tier two, $5,000, and tier three is $10,000. And these are, the value of the administrative citation program is that it can be issued by rangers, code enforcement officials, also police. So, basically, it opens up the, sort of the, the pool of people that can help, help with enforcement of the health order. And prior to this, as you all know, the only tool available for enforcement, at least, was to use a criminal misdemeanor, which criminal misdemeanors only can be issued by law enforcement, and they are prosecuted by the district attorney. The administrative citations are, they differ from that, because as I mentioned earlier, they could be issued by civilians, not just police, and they can, and they're essentially like a parking ticket. They're administered, not, they're not criminal prosecutions, they're administered through a much more ministerial-type process. The appeal process and the fine process is all much more straightforward and streamlined. So, as you also know, we regularly, we recently updated our, our code enforcement ordinances. So, before, we only had the ability to do nuisance abatements, and now we have the ability to do nuisance abatements, as well as infractions, through an administrative citation process and notice and order process. So we've expanded the tools available on the civilian side of things to get compliance when necessary. And I will say that the county process, and certainly the process that all the cities, including us, are advocating is continuing the education-first program. That's obviously the goal, is to, is to educate people about what's allowed and what's not allowed, and try to get voluntary compliance. But there are instances where voluntary compliance doesn't work, for whatever reason, and you just need some other tools to gain that compliance. Infraction is kind of the missing middle that wasn't available previously. It was just education and criminal misdemeanor, there wasn't that middle step in terms of a way to escalate it. So, on August 6th, the Board of Supervisors did adopt an urgency ordinance with that updated commercial fine schedule, which is, as I mentioned, $1,000, $5,000, $3,000, progressive fines for repeat offenders. The city staff reviewed the county's urgency ordinance, and the item tonight is recommending that we move forward with our own urgency ordinance, and I'll maybe stop for a second, because I'll just explain a little bit what's in the packet. So we have, we have an urgency ordinance that is, it requires a four-fifth vote of the council, and because of the need for its urgent implementation, it can be implemented the night that it's adopted. So that's the urgency ordinance. The regular, with that is another ordinance, which is a regular The regular, with that is another ordinance, which is a regular ordinance, and that regular ordinance is identical to the urgency ordinance, but, but that ordinance would just be, if the council so chooses, would just be introduced tonight, and it would be adopted at a subsequent council meeting, our next council meeting, and then it would go into effect 30 days after that meeting. And then the third thing that is in the packet is a resolution. The resolution does two things. One is it sets the fines, and it also, secondly, allows the city to use the county's code process if we so choose. So as I mentioned, the city does have its own code enforcement process and our own administrative citation process that we have codified and that we have available to us. In exploring the, this item for enforcement of the county health order, we, you know, we came to the conclusion that because we're a general law city, we don't have the ability to fine through an administrative citation above $1,000. So what you see in the urgency and the, what you see in the ordinances, actually, in the resolution, is that we're recommending to be as consistent as possible with the county's ordinance, but within the, you know, the government code that we're allowed to operate in, that gives us the $100 individual or personal fine ability, and the $1,000, which is the first step of the county's commercial fine ordinance. We don't have available to us the $5,000 or $10,000 step, which the county can, because they're governed under a separate part of the state statute. So, so how this would work essentially is, now I'm talking about the resolution specifically, is that if the council were to adopt these tonight, then the urgency ordinance would go into effect immediately. The fines to be consistent with the county, and I think that's helpful in terms of outreach and education, just be consistent regionally is a good thing, is that we would have 101,000 fines, as I mentioned, and those fines would stay in place through the life of the city council's declaration of emergency for the COVID response. So when that declaration is rescinded at some point, then the fines would revert to the normal infraction fines that are found, that you can find in our municipal code, which is the 100, 200, 500 fines. Secondly, by adopting a, or going on the path of adopting a permanent ordinance, we would also be, you know, creating some changes to our municipal code that would allow, it would allow, once that is, then once that goes into effect, so if we were introduced tonight, it gets, you know, it gets adopted, next council meeting goes into effect 30 days after that, then when that code goes into effect, the urgency ordinance would expire at that time, because like I said, those are two identical ordinances. The urgency ordinance would just be the stopgap until the permanent ordinance goes into effect. And that permanent ordinance then would persist into the future, so if we were to ever have another public health order, for whatever reason, it would then, because it's incorporated into our municipal code, be considered, violations of that order would be considered a violation of our municipal code, and therefore we would enforce it for administrative tools that we already have in place. And then I think just the last thing, I'll just, I'll just point out, I know, I think everyone's probably aware of this, but I think the City of Santa Rosa was also considering something similar today, and, and if we were, the City of Santa Rosa is a charter city, which is different than the general law cities, so they currently are governed under some slightly different rules there in terms of fine amounts. But the second part of that resolution does allow us to use the county's ordinance if we choose to. I don't expect that we would be generally looking to use that. If we were to try to use the county's ordinance, we would have to use the, we would essentially be acting like an agent of the county. So we would be using the county's citation book, I imagine, we would be remitting the citations to the county, it would be going through their appeal process, and the fines would be going through their process as well. So it, the resolution seeks authority to use it. I don't know that we would do that, but I suppose there is an unforeseen egregious case that might warrant something like that. And then just for context, the other things I'll just, just mention again is that the county did, in the prior meeting back in July, or later July, they dedicated additional funding to public outreach to try to get more education, particularly education in the Latino community, and also they opened a hotline, which has been reported on a lot since it started last week, and that hotline is intended to be a county-wide hotline that will farm out complaints to jurisdictions wherever they happen to be coming from. And if, if we do have a instance where education ultimately doesn't work, and infractions don't ultimately work, the goal is to work with county council and probably the, just at the time to, you know, if we ever were to move up to like a misdemeanor-type scenario. So hopefully we'll be seeing some closer coordination with the county as, you know, as we have any instances that come up that are just, that are problematic. There's not many, but they do occasionally come up, so we'll see some tighter coordination with the county on those types of issues. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to council, see if there are any questions. Councilmember Delosso, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Damian, I just, I was thinking about this as I had read through the agenda over the weekend, but I'm, I'm gonna ask, because I, I think I heard you correctly, but I just want to follow this. So when we, when somebody goes to make a motion, are we required to have three separate motions for these items, or can we make all three of these under just one motion?
Yeah, John, probably. I can try to answer it.
Thank you, John.
You could, I think you could move to staff recommendation, if you think there's a good chance you'll have four fifths vote on, on the entire motion. There's no worry if there's concern about there being, that you won't get four votes for them, you might want to separate the urgency ordinance from the other two actions.
Right, okay, or whoever makes the motion, let's just say fails, then we would start from scratch, so I guess there's a couple ways to approach it. I wasn't clear, but I am now, that it sounds like we could make one motion for all three of these items.
Correct. And it would fail if it didn't get a four-fifths vote, because it, the, the second item requires a four-fifths vote.
Right, and then the, the person who provided the motion would just go back to the drawing board and start again. Okay, correct, thank you, that was my question. Thank you both, appreciate it.
Okay, and I'll check and see if there are any other questions for staff on the presentation. All right, not seeing any. I will now ask Lauren, our city clerk, to check and see if there are any public comments from our attendees.
Marjorie Krupshir, go ahead.
All right, okay, I didn't realize I had to do it, my apologies. So this is my question. If in fact this is approved and fines are brought to bear, what happens with that money? Where does that go?
And just so you understand, we can't usually do a back and forth, just see.
Oh, okay.
No, no, that's okay.
I'm sorry, I was waiting. Just know that there's a question hanging out there, that's all. Thank you.
Mayor Skilman, that will be it for public comment.
Okay, great, so we'll bring it back to council and, and see, Damian, if you could answer their question really quickly about the fines. My understanding is if we go with the county's enforcement, then the county handles the fine amounts. But you could clarify if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so it could go two different ways. If we are using our authority under our citation process, so that's the, what's being proposed tonight is the $100 for individual fines and the $1,000 for commercial fines. If we issued a citation under that authority, then the fines would go through our process, essentially, and, you know, you know, some amount of it would eventually come back to the city. If we were to, if we were to use the county's process, so if we wanted to enforce the county's ordinance, then we would be using the county's ticket book, we'd be using the county's appeal process, fines would be remitted to the county, we would just be their agent, essentially, in Cattati, if we're using their ordinance. So that's how it would work.
Okay, thank you for answering that. And I see Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. I really just wanted to have a, or make a comment on this. It just never ceases to amaze me that in a situation like this, how we have to come up with these ordinances, really, and much like the racism that exists out there, it's the uneducated, the ill-informed, the selfish individuals that create the situation. There's something that I read either yesterday or the day before regarding, even in 1918, if this is true, they had fines of $25 for individuals, which would equate to something like $472 in today's dollars. So to me, it's just amazing that we have to go to this level, but in order to protect the greater level of people, I think it is a necessary evil, so to speak. And that was all I wanted to say on that. And if there were no other comments or concerns, I would be happy to make a motion on that.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands, and I definitely concur, and it's, it's a shame we haven't been able to learn from history yet, just go ahead and comply. But anyway, with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. So hopefully I'll read this correctly, but I'm gonna make a motion that we introduce by title in a way of the further reading of an ordinance authorizing administrative penalties for violations of COVID-19 public health orders, and by a four-fifths vote, adopt an urgency ordinance authorizing administrative penalties for violations of COVID-19 public health orders, and adopt a resolution authorizing administrative citations for violations of the public health orders.
And this is Councilmember Lamond, I would be happy to second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Lauren, could you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Delosso.
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamond.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Mayor Skilman.
Yes. Well, there we go, a five-fifths vote. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to our regular agenda and go on to item 13A, which is an update on Farmster at the Veranda Fleddy Ranch, and I will turn it over to our city manager, Damian Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we have Dustin DiMatteo here tonight, who's gonna do the presentation, but I just wanted to, I don't think I need to introduce him, everyone knows Dustin. It's, you know, we've been under construction for a while, and that just wrapped up, as you know, I mean, this is the session tonight. So at least with regard to the farmhouse and the water tower, that, that construction's complete, and so obviously, we're a bit constrained with the, with the COVID restrictions now, but we're looking forward to just gradually building engagement out there at the farm with the enhanced facilities that are available to the public now. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dustin to run through the PowerPoint here. And Dustin, you're muted, if you don't know.
Thank you for sending me the unmute button, that was awesome. Thank you for the introduction, Damian, to the rest of the council, good evening. Thank you for city staff recommending this presentation. It's always an honor to do this, even though it's a little different than usual. As mentioned, my name is Dustin DiMatteo, I'm a co-founder, as well as the current director of Farmster, as well as the lead operator over there at the Veranda Fleddy Ranch, also a field projects manager and safety officer over at the San Francisco Conservation Corps, and as my career with Farmster began, as an SSU alumni, and more recently, Citizen of the Year from you folks. So we'll get into the presentation here. Let's see here. So the mission to grow food and farm skills while sharing local resources, that's something that hasn't changed. Our goals, they haven't really changed either, we're really striving towards that financial independence as a grassroots organization. And over at the Veranda Fleddy Ranch, one of our goals, as it's been dormant for so long as one of these conservation easements, is to turn it not only into a local, but a regional hotspot. We have neighbors buzzing around the property every day, every evening, as well as farming experts, as well as educators, visiting and scheduling their time throughout the region. So it's an exciting time, and one of our biggest things, right, is to turn and convert that passive engagement into active membership. And one of the biggest things that has changed is our strategy, and you can't see that little orange box at the bottom for some reason, but I'll tell you what our strategy is, and that's to collaborate with succession with local experts, as well as vendors, and really try to fulfill our mission through collaboration. That's one of the biggest things that we're, we're recommitting to in our second year here. I do apologize that didn't show up. But how did we get here? And that circles back to our initial mandate through a city RFP y'all put out, and we were so graciously selected in September of 2018, and I was to bring a demonstration farm here. It's crazy, we're about a year and a half into our contract here, got roughly 10 months on that ticker still, with some opportunities for some five-year renewals. And one of the biggest things our volunteers, our community knows is we had a huge focus on livestock last year, sheep shearing events, goat hoof trimming events, some planting opportunities. We'd say about 80% of our focus last year was on livestock, and about 20% on gardening. One of the biggest things that has changed since then, that we're moving forward as part of our strategy, is a way bigger focus on organic gardening and building a lot of rich topsoil out there. And you can see what we submitted in our initial proposal, and we're actually encroaching that very quickly here with some of the funding and capacity building opportunities we have, but some garden spaces and some no-grave zones. For those that, once again, don't know, or this is their first time hearing about Farmster, we like to, you know, share that information abroad, but in our first 18 months, you know, our you folks over at the city committed to renovating what is now a completed beautiful farmhouse and tower out there with the intention that they can be used by Farmster. Currently, and going through the future, City of Cattati and Farmster share a governance through ag and open space, since the property is zoned in perpetuity, and keeping that character, that very rich agricultural history for the City of Cattati. Some of the early wins we had, there was a lot of engagement and goodwill that came from our community, as well as, you know, our neighbors, partners in the area, and it created a lot of goodwill, and we're very focused on converting that into some membership. With COVID, we're gonna get into that a little bit later, but here's just a rolodex of a lot of the free community education and awareness building campaigns we did last year. We had a junior, junior Farmster summer camp, partnered, had volunteers, interns, as well as a business, upper division business class from Sonoma State University, partnered with the preschool. Lot of big focus on education, we are not a production farm. And then lastly, you see here, relationship building with you at the staff, the chamber level, other local restaurateurs, chefs, educators. We'll talk about more of the livestock experts in the community that love to support this program. But as you step into a new site, But as you step into a new site, you know, a new opportunity, you'll run into surprises. We're in a big one right now with this COVID, and how you manage those is very important. So as we stay here, we will convert that goodwill into memberships and volunteers. That is on the docket this week for our board meeting. Talk about that a little later, too. The kids that we partner with, their teachers, their parents, they all love dirt and cute animals. You all know this. We all know this. And they want to support a demonstration farm. And there's a lot of teaching that can be done related to where our food comes from. Our mission is to grow food, and then our mission is to grow farm skills for people and teach those. But sometimes there's a disconnect in between. We like to think that we can help people grow out of the garden into a farming operation. To date, we have not had any access or use of the house or of the tower. Limited our development in operations as well, too. You know, you see here, let's just see, office-based restroom. But now that we've had a lot of time to build out this infrastructure, to really start to take that step forward towards our potential, we're going to use that experience to engage in a different way, because we have to, right? But one of the biggest things that you can see here on number four is to really convert it into revenue. We need to develop that sustainability in our long-term planning, both with our partners, with you all, and staff, and take a lot more time with it. In order to fulfill, you know, this high ceiling we have, we needed to return to our roots, and that is that collaboration focus. That is that strategic focus for the organization. At the top here, you can see some of our funders and collaborators here. In the center, you'll see our target focus. One of the things to quickly note there is you see a lot of capitalized plans. Lot of plans for both the short term and long term. We're trying to integrate. And COVID has provided us that opportunity to get a lot of meetings scheduled, host these virtual tours to collect that input. Some of the outcomes are at the bottom here. We have rotarians, both from Runner Park and Khatati, plus volunteers that want to get involved, help build out this kid zone. That is something we specialize in at the ranches, very adolescent youth education. And at large, who will benefit? As I mentioned, we've got a lot of buzz, a lot of engagement from the perimeter looking in. And we have that big focus on livestock, but what happens when you don't have a plan? A lot of livestock, you get a lot of poop everywhere. So we're taking that poop and that carbon. We're going to organize it. We're going to put together a managed grazing plan in order to start to announce and promote some of the best management practices we have. And also share those of some of those regional experts that come in and share their collective wisdom. One of my favorites I'm looking forward to is, as an education and not a production farm, theming the property as an outdoor classroom. The first five foundation of Sonoma County through our partner, our program partner with the Rainbow Bridge Montessori School, is committed helping us not bring one, not bring two, not bring three, but four preschools into some type of a membership program, where last year they would take access tours and field trips and start to integrate their curriculum with things that they can see seasonally and are involved in on the farm. The last two, from the county, from the Farm Bureau. These are open portals for us to go get funding in the future. And a lot of what they're doing is helping us announce that we're here in Khatati, that we're marketing some of our free and our affordable programmings. We're really trying to establish some regular programming with all this COVID going on. But then for the Farm Bureau, the theme there is efficiency. And we're being more efficient with my time as the manager of the livestock, but then also how other folks, in a volunteer or a member capacity, come out there and interact with the land. I want to respect everybody's time. I know it's a long council meeting. So we're going to go through quickly some examples of what this funding could equate to or result in. If you organize our animals, you got our chicken trailer right there. If you start to think about the cause and effect of, you know, these types, different types of animals and quantities that you put on the land, there can be different outcomes. If you put a bunch of pigs on a property and you feed them food waste right now, we've got a great problem, which is infestation of a lot of tomato plants. Because those seeds have gone to soil and have grown, and we're harvesting those with volunteers. We hosted a couple of plant sales, you know, a little bit before and after this shelter in place. But you can see a great example in the center here. Is if your goal is to grow a garden bed and then grow food from that, chickens in a smaller situation might make more sense for your backyard or small-scale operation like we have. On the right-hand side, you can see one that is a little bit tops out at our property and could be used on larger parcels. But this is a managed grazing plan. This is a coordinated effort on a lot of fronts to make this happen. It doesn't happen overnight. I mentioned the outdoor education classroom. On our next slide, we'll be quickly talking about some of the Farm Bureau funding towards efficiency. And one of the things we want to do this year is grow a lot of food. We want to be efficient in that approach. See a couple of examples of a greenhouse that we're going to utilize some Farm Bureau funding for. But what you see here is different themes of educational classrooms or outdoor spaces. Top one, a lot of deer fencing. This could be found in maybe Oregon. The bottom ones seem to be a little bit more accommodating for the everyday user. And my favorite's the far-right one, because I'm a bookworm. So we're going to, we've actually collected a lot of input and feedback from a variety of folks in agrarian and agriculture space. So we take that first step in nursery management in organized fashion to fulfill some of our larger goals for the organization, like make revenue, right? So here's our Farm Bureau grant. We are looking at bringing on a twenty-by-forty greenhouse. And here are some of the many benefits that our Khatati residents and travelers from afar alike can have access to. This is actually what I'm very passionate about is the job training. So I get paid to do for a living here is to organize the field trips, the workshops. We will have some production space there now that we have a kitchen to take these fruits, vegetables, and flowers to. But the big one here, once again, is job training. That's what I'm extremely passionate about. Here are some of the topics that we can really dive into due to the fact that we have some no-grave zones on the property. And that's a quick call out to all the work that city staff has done, M3 Construction, our own Farmster team, to integrate some more gray zones and make this construction project stack some functions in what we're trying to accomplish out there. This is an example of the membership program we promoted last year. To our demise, it didn't necessarily work. The one we had the most success with, and we're leaning into that with the preschool, is the community programs one at seventy-five dollars a month. And that's something that potentially would gain people more access in a field trip fashion or a larger community group fashion. But the funding here on the left-hand side, this is through David Rabbit's office. You can see some of the examples we're hoping to incorporate. We've been very silent about us as the operator over there. And it's, you know, now that we have the funding, we're looking to hopefully have a bulletin board, some brochures, maybe some badges or volunteer T-shirts, so there is an insignia, there is something to be proud of as you're doing your work out there and you get out of your regular day clothes to put in some good work. Some of these other programs, we still run food waste. We still run livestock out there. We are always promoting the history of the site, the deep, deep, rich history of agriculture for Khatati. But the one we're most interested in now with construction being done is that community level. And how are we getting people involved on a monthly basis? Holistically speaking, I mentioned the managed grazing plan, but what happens when you organize all of that poop and organic matter? You can start to think a little bit larger about integrating that organic matter into the garden. If you don't have a plan in place, you will fail in that regard in contamination or trying to take steps towards your organic certification. But one of the biggest challenges we've had in approaching that and being organized is if you see in this little photo on the far right, it's a tractor. You know, it's a lot of, there can be a lot of organic matter that is generated. But in general, this is some of the growth edges or the growing pains we have as we're taking those steps from a grassroots into a little bit smaller of an organization is just figuring out what are the best management practices. So everybody in Khatati, whether you have a little tiny backyard space or you have up to three acres of land that you have the luxury to garden or farm on, but to share these resources that, as we grow, we can document and put them out there online. And then hopefully, host some seasonal workshops. You know, during this time, we've been taking extreme caution and measures, and we're actually putting a pause on our volunteer program in order to get more signage out there around the safety COVID measures. There's this new health ordinance that came out this week that we're working on a priority level with the board to make sure that we don't open any engagement with the community until all of those things are in place. So please forgive the Saturdays at ten to twelve, but that is something that we're hoping to open up for September. Here is a couple of our many volunteers that we have worked with in the past. But Damian Emily, working with our new baby calf out there, who, as you can see, is a very healthy, docile, friendly calf that we've been halter training. In the center is an example of a seasonal workshop. Last year, we had maybe fifty people at our Open Farm Friday to watch us, to bring in an expert to shear, as well as our Farmster staff doing goat hoof trimming. This year, it's much different. We're trying to take more of those management responsibilities on our own. So you can see me here shearing. What you don't see is what happened last week before this new health ordinance, was Emily over there practicing shearing. So we're really, as we've not grown as much food as we have liked, we have taught so many people a lot of different farm concepts, knowledge, and given them a hands-on experience. So you'll quickly see all of our five sheep out there get sheared. We're about three-quarters of the way done. And one of the things we did about two weeks ago, and we'll wrap this up here shortly, which I had a lot of fun in helping coordinate and obviously serve as the onsite operator to fill in some of the educational pieces. Because we had Richard King, who is a retired NRCS technical advisor, who is doing a water conservation project during our rancher-to-rancher event we had, where we had, we had maxed out our twelve capacity with different property managers, other nonprofits. You can see the executive director and her partner from Filtlandia in the back of this photo. But, you know, we're trying to be a demonstration farm, right? This free event was to bring all these people in and teach them, at least in the ways we've worked and tapping into that collective wisdom, how grazing can play huge impact on water conservation, soil health, as well as weed management. So that was a really fun event. Just a taste of what we could do in a seasonal series. But another free community education event that was hosted right next door to you guys with all the safety COVID measures in compliance with. Some of the other latest musings that we really look forward to September in presenting and providing an update at that point is this kid zone concept, which we're working on putting some renderings together. This is a photo of Lemos Farms out in Half Moon Bay, which is to the nth degree too much of what we need at the ranch. But my favorite part was the sign, where as we start to grow as an organization, there can seem to be a lot going on, even though it seems rather fallow and dormant by design. This is an engaging experience and an extremely rewarding educational opportunity for people. And having proper signage at the site, both for those looking passively from the outside looking in, as well as those who take their first magical step over here at the community gem of Khatati, take it seriously and understand there's a lot going on, and they got to pay attention for several reasons. So we want to move that kid zone concept forward tremendously. We have a lot of support. We have a lot of input. We'll be back in September to talk more about it. Another agenda item here tonight is that construction is, I'm hoping, here complete this week. So another great shout out to city staff and through construction, project managers, Rick, Mike. They've done a tremendous job out there, and you can tell that they put in a lot of TLC to this project. And lastly, one of my, one of my most proudest moments of this organization after the last five years is getting a remarkable group of people together to help with the decision-making and the administrative challenges that this organization has handled, but would like to, once again, promote more best management practices for other nonprofits that are getting their stuff going. So here's a quick little photo of us toasting to our first board meeting, which we've got our second one later this week. Thank you all so much for what you guys do, city clerk for putting this together, and staff, once again, for all of your help in the process as we grow this organization. If there's any questions, comments, concerns, I'll be online to address them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dustin, for the presentation. And I will bring it back to council to see if there are any questions or anything. I see Councilwoman Delacour, you've got your hand up. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Dustin, thanks for that. You know, just, it's such a joy to walk or bike or even drive by and see. Every time I go by, there's something different going on over there, which is really great. Couple of times that my wife and I have stopped to help out has been a huge blast as well. So my question, and maybe I missed this, so I apologize. Do you have, or what is your intent on the use of the house that's been remodeled? I'm not sure if it's completed yet, but what is kind of the long-term goals for that structure?
The long-term goals for the farmhouse is to utilize primarily the country-style kitchen, as well as what we have added into this construction. Some of the amendments we added is to open up the space in order to have, you know, I talked about the community group model, have different small community groups to get involved there and can rent out potentially a room or a common space or the kitchen to host culinary arts workshop, host a book club. But there are a lot of models out there to utilize these kind of quasi-public-private spaces in order to serve a larger audience. So that is our long-term vision for the farmhouse.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure where that was going to go. So and certainly the old tower there, it looks great now that it's been remodeled. So I think once we get, you know, those first couple of reins and things green up, it's going to just look spectacular over there. So congrats and keep up the great work. Thanks.
Thank you so much, John.
And Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Thank you, Dustin. That was a nice presentation on that program. I have a couple of questions. I think that the program and the parcel are a community asset. And as you stated earlier, a jewel to the city. With that in mind, my hope is that it's a financially sustainable program. And I'm curious, who is on your board of directors? How many members you have on the board of directors? And what is your budget, your current budget and your projected budget going forward in the next couple of years?
Oh, boy, I'm writing them down, John. So to answer your first question about our board, the chair of our board is Anne Ogulany. She's a Khatati resident. We also have Jeff Kelly, our treasurer, and Ashwarit, who is also photographed in my presentation, who is our secretary. She's the principal of the Rainbow Bridge Montessori School in Khatati. And Jeff has experience in financial management, works at Exchange Bank, has experience setting up his own nonprofits. A lot of big focus on policy with this group. And it's our small-starter pack nonprofit group, but we've got some big aspirations to grow that board. So it's just those three, and I serve as the president on the board. And to answer your second question, our budget is currently very strapped to expending the grant funding that we have, and it sits at about twenty-two, twenty-three thousand dollars. That's a big focus for this new board of directors group to iron out the financial policy, decision-making policy. But we are going to have to scale this operation to meet that financial sustainability to potentially a two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, two-hundred to two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar budget very quickly in the next few years. And that is why we have some, we've asked for some of the assets that you've seen in those grant requests is to approach those opportunities, those revenue-generating opportunities with a fair degree of confidence that you're not going to have goats get in there and eat all your plants, right? Or some of these other opportunities. But it's also challenged us to think outside of what I, as just one person or our board, can do. And we really try to think about the different communities of Khatati and how we can serve them best. So we're not going to raise that two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget in a night, but I do think that's a testament to the fantastic license agreement and term limits that we have that we're hoping to really scale this project to potentially meet that budget. Shoot, I don't want to jump the gun, but hopefully next year, hopefully next year, we can really encroach that amount. But it's going to start small this year to get all of that grant funding spent and open us up to apply for some more funding.
And do you think that going forward, that the annual budget, or have you projected that the annual budget for this would be roughly a couple hundred thousand per year?
Right, yes. So for this year, it's very much tied to closing out our grant funding next year. It's probably going to have to double fifty thousand, but then we're hoping when we get into that first five-year renewal cycle that we're pumping out as, at a two-hundred-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar organization. That's only a couple of years, but yes, we're going to have to scale this thing.
Well, I wish you continued success on that. Having been on multiple nonprofit boards, I know how it can be difficult to have a sustaining funding level. But I think it's a great program, and I really wish you well on that, and hopefully, we can get to that point. we can get to that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore.
And I'm not seeing any other hands, but I just wanted to say as well, I've really appreciated all of the blood and sweat, I don't know if there were tears, there may have been tears involved, but, that you put out in getting this project going, and it's just, it's fantastic to see, especially the neighborhood kids who, as soon as they see a car pull up or they recognize you out there, they're immediately showing up on their bikes and scooters, hey, can we collect the eggs? Hey, can we feed anybody? Hey, can we, I mean, they're just super enthusiastic, and I think there's so much buy-in when you've got neighborhood that, then they feel personally invested, and so you're really not gonna see any, any issues because people take pride in what they've got in their neighborhood. So I just really appreciate all of your hard work. It's been wonderful to be able to walk by and see the progress of everything out there, and just thank you so much for your dedication to this project.
I mean so much. Thank you, Mayor Skilman. It takes a village, huh?
Definitely, definitely. All right, and Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up again. Did you have something else to add?
Of course, you know, I can't go away with just that. I did have a question for our City Manager, Mr. Obed. I am driving by there just the other evening after dark. I was, I don't know if we have any funding available after all of this to get a light on the corner of School Street and West Sierra on that, what that would be, the north, north corner of there, right where it would light up that whole, that whole project. I think that would be an asset to, you know, lighten that during the evening when people are driving by and create an even greater interest in that.
Yeah, for, under this project, we don't, but that, you know, potentially give you a good safety project. As you know, we do, the council, you know, allocates safety money every year for road projects. It could be a good safety project that you put into the hopper, start considering.
Thank you very much. I would appreciate that. That's been a sore spot for me for multiple years.
Well, I think as there's more activity, as that, as that farm gets more engagement, we'll probably only see foot traffic increase, so I think it's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
All right, well, with that, we will let you go, Dustin. Thank you very much for your time tonight and your presentation.
Thank you.
And continued good luck out there. And with that, we'll move on to Item 13B, Award of the Construction Contract for 2020 Street Construction and Improvement Projects. And for that, I will turn back to Mr. Craig Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. This item is the, this year, the 2020 Streets of Construction and Improvements Project, and the project was introduced to council back in February with the adoption of the city's five-year capital improvement program, which include, included chapters on each of the city's departments, including streets. And so the streets showed this, the project of the inner hub streets and the outer hub streets, along with West Sierra Avenue, and the portion of Al Perizo from West Sierra Avenue to, to the creek crossing as part of the 2020-2021 project. Now, subsequent to the adoption of the, this, the five-year CIP, and, you know, in June, we were looking at the, the city budget process. It was apparent that we had to account for the uncertainties due to the COVID-19 situation, and I can't advi, I can't advance the slides, Lauren. Is there a way to perhaps give me control?
Yeah, go ahead, control, just let me know when.
Yeah, any, anytime. Okay, oh, okay. And so this project was put in the category B, you know, to reflect that uncertainty so that it would be reviewed with updated financial projections and when revenues come in. And so we had the presentation by Ms. Quarter earlier on this evening, and considering that and discussions with both Ms. Quarter and the City Manager, the determination was made that there are sufficient funds to move forward. One thing to note, this is originally envisioned, this project is nine-thousand linear feet of roadway, and so to kind of hedge our bet that we'd have a project to move forward with, we were looking at targeting about a one-point-five-million-dollar project, and so we scaled it back to about forty-five percent of that, or just over three-quarters of a mile down from one-point-seven miles. And so we're looking at, yes, can you go ahead and advance this slide, please? This project here, so that, we've removed the inner hub and West Sierra Avenue, and so the project before us is the named streets in that section of Al Perizo, and the engineer's estimate on that was, go ahead and advance, was one-point-three-six million dollars. And because this is a really terrific bidding environment right now, we received five bids, and the low bid came in at just over one million dollars, which is a savings to the city of three-hundred-thousand dollars, which is significant. And so we decided, hey, we're, we would recommend moving forward with this project even during these times. Can you go ahead and advance one more time? The, as this was originally awarded for the design contract with GHD, it was for the entire originally envisioned project. So the, the pieces that we've left out of this are still moving forward in design, and we're looking to have that be shovel-ready by the end of next month, by the end of September. And the NEPA, which is the Federal Environmental Documentation, is being completed as well so that in the event that federal stimulus money would become available for roadway infrastructure, the other portion of this project would be ready to go. Okay, go ahead and advance that. The, the project is FDR, which is Full Depth Reclamation. It's a recycled-in-place technique where the asphalt and the subbase are turned up and rototilled, if you will, just really mixed up and got into a really good fine consistency, and then a cement mixture is added, so that forms a really solid base, and that's really environmentally friendly because it's, instead of off-hauling all of that material, it's using it and recycling it in place. And then there is a much less section of asphalt, two inches overlaid on top of that, and essentially this provides the city with brand-new streets. So we did this last year on, in L section, as well as the year before, eighteen, nineteen, and then last year. So that was in the L section, we saw what good, what a good product that was. But I just wanted to mention also that the city has been making a very sizable investment in its roadways over at least the last several years with five million dollars going into our roadways, and we've taken advantage of grant money as well. There was a section of roadway that we improved in front of Sunflower Park, and then, and then also last year, we had digouts and slurry seal over all of East Kattati Avenue, all the way from Old Roadwood Highway up to the roadway tracks, so, and striping. So we are starting to see returns on our investment there, and I'll talk to that a little bit later here. But what this slide shows, in addition to the paving, there's sort of ancillary improvements that go along with these types of projects. And in this case, we're in the vicinity of the city's three public parking lots, and so we'll be doing digouts where there's alligator croaking and failed section of those parking lots, and then repaving over the top of those, and then it's restriping as well. And so those are the West Sierra, La Plaza, and Henry Street public parking lots. There, again, what's typical here is that where there are deficient ADA ramps, pedestrian ramps, those are typically replaced, and so we have four in this project. And then throughout the project, we'll, we have sort of added or enhanced striping to what was there existing for speed humps. You know, there are speed humps now in Olaf. Those will be replaced, and then we'll add a couple more speed humps, one on, in the middle of William Street, and then one on Charles Street, right in the middle there. And instead of just having the speed hump, there's the striping sort of leading up to the speed hump and the signage. The sheroes, which would be the bike stencils that go on the roadway to indicate to folks that it's a shared vehicle and bicycle pa, bicycle use. And then in some instances, we have center lines that just go into a portion of that after the intersection, just to make it clear to drivers. And then just miscellaneous stuff, old signs are replaced. Typically, we have make use of the existing pole, just replace the sign. Bits of sidewalk that are broken up, and those flags would be taken out and re-poured, and then broken-up piece of curb and gutter. That's very limited in this part of the project, but there are some of those involved. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so as I mentioned before, the city is in the middle of making significant investment in its roadways, and this is communicating the overall strategy that cities across the state are sort of nudged towards. So the, on the top there, you've got the very poor, poor, good, and very good roadway conditions, and these are all on a scale of zero to one-hundred, which is the pavement condition index. And you can see the break-off there, zero to twenty-five is very poor, twenty-five to fifty is poor, fifty to seventy is in the good category, and the very good is seventy to a hundred. And so back in 2015, we were flirting with the poor category, just hovering above that, fifty-three, and then fifty-two. If we were to drop below fifty, we'd be in the poor road category. And then you can see the results of our investment in our roadways, where we've started the climb fifty-two to fifty-five to fifty-six, and we reached sixty, which is right there in the middle of the good category. So that was quite an achievement for the city to take ourselves from the brink of being overall poor shape to being in the middle of the good category. Now, you could see, just with the passage of time, roadways do degrade, and so we've lost a point just from last summer, we're on PCI fifty-nine. And so this is all a reflection of the, the results, the output of the Street Saver Model, which models every single street segment in the city. And so we get these reports from Street Saver every month, and the typical score of a city our size is forty-seven, so we're well above that at fifty-nine and sixty. And we hope to continue with that, with this, this year's project. Go ahead and please advance. From the Pavement Capital Program, we had this, we presented this table, which is inserted on the slide here, showing what the projected improvement of our overall city PCI would be if we stuck to our five-year capital improvement program. And I'm in, so on the right side there, you could see sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, all the way to sixty-seven with each year. Since if we were to move forward with just half of the 2020 project, you know, just, just my guess would be we'd get from fifty-nine, not to sixty-four, but perhaps to sixty-one or sixty-two, and we wouldn't be able to round it up to the four, sixty-four unless that's second part, part two. We're kind of starting to refer to it as it gets constructed with federal stimulus money or with city funding, if that becomes available. So we're on a good pace, oh, yeah. So the, the whole premise here is that when you're in the very poor, poor realm, doing street work is very expensive. The street project, it's not the cheaper methods, it's always a very expensive street remediation work where you have to rebuild essentially the roadways. So why it's such a goal of ours to get out, up into the good and into the very good is because if, if we manage to get the overall city streets in the very good category, then we're just doing slurry seal, which is just a fifth of the cost. We could reduce our street expenditures by over eighty percent because we're just going around every year doing these very inexpensive slurry seals on our roadways instead of reconstruction. So that's what we're trying to get to, and we're, we're well on our way. Next slide, please. Okay, so for the matter at hand, we opened bids not too long ago, July twenty-eighth, and as I mentioned, the low bidder is Team Jalati Incorporated for just over a million dollars, twenty-two percent below the engineer's estimate. We also have a construction management professional service agreement with Green Valley that is being proposed and requested and received from them for that, one-hundred-forty-eight-thousand, one-hundred-and-ten. They went through a consultant selection process back in August of 2019, and were found to be the most qualified to perform these services. GHD Inc., which prepared the design, they are going to be on hand during construction to provide engineering design support during construction, and they have sufficient money in their design budget to provide those services. And with, along with contingency of about eleven percent, the total project budget that we're, staff is requesting to be appropriated with the associated resolution to this item is one-million-three-hundred-sixty-thousand dollars. And the funding sources are listed there, Measure G, GAST, PAX, MTC Streets, the SP1 money, and then General Fund. Okay, next slide, please. There's, there's, well, just quickly, the schedule has forty-five working days, so with the paperwork following, anticipate, following approval, the start date would be August thirty-first, and then the contract would be completed no later than November Okay, next slide, please. So that, that concludes the presentation. I just wanted to say that staff is very encouraged. I just wanted to say that staff is very encouraged that even during these uncertain times, we're able to move forward with our commitment to putting significant investment into our roadways, as we can see that's going to pay off in the future. And this project here, we have sufficient funds to move forward with this piece of the project, and it keeps us on track to making that investment. Our recommendation is to go ahead and adopt the resolution awarding the 2020 Street Construction Improvements Project to Team Gilati Incorporated and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract, as well as the construction management and inspection agreement, and any needed change orders and amendments to the approved project budget. That concludes the presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Actually, Mayor, just one last thing I'll add, I think, just for everyone's benefit. One of the considerations in the, in the phasing of the project beyond what Craig already described was, the named streets all have a similar construction method, so it makes it easier to fit that as a single package. But also, it's primarily residential, as opposed to La Plaza, which was another part of the original sort of plan. But La Plaza, because of the COVID challenges that businesses are going through, businesses largely front on La Plaza, so we also felt it was probably not a good time to be doing a lot of construction on those streets this summer. So it was a very conscious decision to focus on the named streets, which, as I said, primarily residential. And then, I know, this kind, this came up, and it came up earlier in Angela's presentation financial update, but we're, we're fortunate that the council has been pledging conservatively and has prioritized reserves throughout, you know, as long as I've been a manager here. So it puts, it puts the city in a position where it can better weather economic uncertainties, but also take advantage of times like this when the bidding environment is so favorable that we can really save the residents of Cattadi a lot of money by being able to move forward on infrastructure work now, when we can get at a substantial discount. And with regard to the presentation earlier by Angela, because of the, because of the conservative budgeting, it looks like we, we can largely or entirely, you know, contribute the, the General Fund, Measure G funds to the project without further impacting reserves, budgetary reserves in the General Fund. So I just wanted to reiterate those points.
All right, thank you. So first, I'll bring it back to the council, see if there's any questions. And Councilmember Landman, I see you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Mr. Scott, you kind of mostly answered a question, but I wanted to dig a little deeper into it that I had been thinking about. I had been wondering if we're able to get where we want to go, where we're kind of at the halfway point, which is to get our city's streets to that wonderful green section of very good, where maintenance is much cheaper to maintain, what savings would look like? And tonight, you actually did mention that it would be an approximately an 80% reduction. I wonder if you could even roughly hazard a guess what that might look like, potentially look like annually for our budget? I know certainly the last few years, we've spent ranging anywhere from a little over $1 million to up to $3.6 million on street projects. It strikes me that 80% reduction is in the long term, if we can get to that point, would be pretty beneficial for the community. Is that something you can even take a swing at?
Yes, so if we were to, to have a $1.5 million remediation budget, which is what we're looking at to increase our PCI, and then we reach that very good status, 80% drop of that would get us down to $200,000 or $300,000 a year instead of the $1.5 million. And so that would be a substantial savings. You know, we could, we could potentially have over $1 million reduction in our street CIP each year.
Well, I thank you for clarifying it this, this time, because I think it just shows the value of the direction that you guys have all been working so hard on, and that that's money can go a lot of good places in this community instead of into roads. But to get that value, we have to get the roads up to good repair and take care of them. So I'll leave you with one easier question, I think. I have to ask, when's the last time you saw a bid come in 22% below the engineer's estimate? You know, I have, we all have little reserves about spending, even when it looks easily within budget during COVID. But I saw that number and went, wow, I thought we got a pretty good value on that bid. Do you ever seen anything like that in recent years?
I, you know, I'd encourage Damian, the city manager, to share as well, that in my career, I have never seen a reduction like this, you know, because we, the paving, asphalt costs are typically tied to, you know, gas prices and crude oil and everything else, and that's just in the last couple decades been going up. And so we're always in a situation where the bids come in higher than the engineer's estimate. So this was such a breath of fresh air to have the, the high competition and have such a low bid for us.
Yeah, that's, that's good to hear, because that's been my experience, too. We see them in, usually come close, but usually always a little above, sometimes disconcertingly larger than we expected. But for the life of me, in 10 years here, I couldn't remember one I'd seen one that this was this much below. So congratulations to all of you. Enjoy this, one of the few bright spots of COVID, at least there's this one small value for our public, so that's good to hear.
And I see Councilmember Harvey, you've got your hand up. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you talked about if we ever get to that really nice green shaded area, how wonderful that would be, and we would, you know, not have to spend so much money on roads. But just for, you know, the public's sense on that, I know we have some roads that are, you know, in really bad shape, that ultimately will have to be completely redone. What is the general timeline for us to really think about if we continue to invest like we have been to get up there into that, you know, 80, 90% range? Are we talking 10 years? Are we, you know, what, a ballpark, what would we have to invest for how long to kind of get us there?
Sure, so on the one chart, the slide had the insert table, that was the projected impact of our, if we stuck with our current five-year street capital program, and we were looking at getting by the end of the fifth year, 2024, to a PCI of 67. So we'd be within three points of getting to that 70, you know, the bottom of the very good category. And so we would start seeing the benefits of having much improved streets. So, but at the same time, the, the streets are always degrading, right? So I think 10 years would be doable. Something less than that is probably something we're striving for, maybe seven or eight years.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I was thinking, you know, probably a decade, because we've got, as you pointed out before, we've got a few roads that are really just total redos, you know, they sit at about zero, and they will be quite expensive for us to actually tackle those.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and I'm not seeing any other hands up from council. So since this is an action item, I will ask our city clerk if we can check and see if any of the attendees have public comments on this item. Thank you, Mayor Skilman. I see no raised hands. Okay, and then the only comment I will make is that, at least on William and Olaf Streets, there's been the sewer construction, which is wonderful, but I'm starting to get PTSD when I start to hear a truck backing up now. So I will definitely be letting my neighbors know that this is coming, just so there's no outcry, because I think overall, obviously, this will be the best plan for getting things in shape here. So with that, I will bring it back to council, see if there's any further comments.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Deloso. If there are no further comments, I'd be delighted to make a motion, but I'll stand in there and see if there are any comments.
Does not look like there are any other hands going up, so the floor is yours.
All right, then. Well, then I move to adopt a resolution awarding the 2020 Street Construction and Improvements Project, project, to Team Gilati Incorporated, and authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract for the project, the construction management and inspection agreement, and any needed change orders and amendments up to the approved project budget.
This is Councilmember Harvey. I'd be happy to second that motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I'll ask our city clerk to take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes. All right, thank you very much, and thank you, Craig, for the presentation as well. And we'll move on to Item C, Appointment of Voting Delegate and Alternates to 2020 Legis Cockline City's Annual Conference.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city. I'll just give a real brief report on this. So as you know, the league is an annual conference, and this year, the, the conference is done in Long Beach, although I doubt anyone's going to be going there. Although I don't think it's, I mean, unless Lauren tells me differently, I don't believe it's been canceled or turned virtual at this point. But the expectation is this is going to be a virtually attended conference. All members of the league are required to appoint a voting delegate to vote on the conference resolutions at this, at the annual business meeting. So the action tonight is appointing a member to, a voting delegate for that conference, would most likely be attending virtually, but if they were not, there are, there is budget in place for attending it if that were to happen. But just keep that in mind, that it could conceivably require some travel, it's not likely. So anyway, so we're looking for a voting delegate and up to two alternate for that. I'd be happy to.
Okay, and I see Councilmember Harvey. You want to go ahead and comment?
Yes, I was on the call the other day with the North Bay Division League, and it, it will be a virtual conference. It will not be in person. What they are trying to do at this point is try to work out the logistics, you know, how do they structure it, the different sessions, how do they charge fees for the different sections, how are they gonna, you know, how will they handle voting? So there's a lot of logistics that they're trying to work out. So more will come, but it, it's going to be a virtual conference this year. And that's what I know.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And I am, at this point, available, since I'm working from home, so I can attend. So I just wanted to let people know that. Is there anybody else that wanted to attend as an alternate?
I certainly would. This is Councilmember Harvey.
Well, then it looks like if there are no further questions or comments, I mean, I suppose this is an action item, so, city, oh, sorry, Vice Mayor Moore, you've got your hand up. Go ahead.
If there are no further questions or comments, I would be happy to make the nomination of Mayor Skilman as a voting delegate and Councilmember Harvey as the alternate.
Okay, well, let me.
Don't we need public input?
Yeah, I was going to just open it up for public comment, but see, that's fine. Now we know who we would be nominating, so we can get specific comments on that. So I'll ask our city clerk, can you check in with the attendees, see if anybody has comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. And at this time, I see no raised hands.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council for a motion. Or sorry, we have the motion on the floor, so go ahead, Vice Mayor Moore, if you wanted to reiterate.
I would just make the motion to nominate Mayor Skilman as the voting delegate and Councilmember Harvey as the alternate, with the caveat that you both have very good internet connections and lots of patience.
Very good.
I'll second that motion. This is Councilmember Deloso.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, so I'll ask our city clerk if he can take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Deloso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes. Okay, great. So now we'll move on to Item 14, and our city manager's report. I'll turn it over to our city manager, Damian Obit.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Okay, so with respect to just a, just a brief status update on the commitments that we had discussed at the community meeting, we're continuing to get information on polling options from polling firms, so we should have some, some good information there very shortly. We're also, we're also working regionally, including with Santa Rosa, that was mentioned tonight, on potential early implementation of RIPA, what that would entail, and how soon that could be implemented, and what sort of technical sort of things need to be figured out to do that. So we're working collaboratively with many agencies in this county on that. And we've also been busy reviewing all, sort of, all the different best practices for small city oversight models throughout the state of California, so we're pretty, pretty well into that effort as well. I don't currently have a date to continue this discussion, but, you know, as I said, we're working hard to get the information together so we can have an informed discussion in the near future on that. So with, with COVID, in terms of updates on that matter, obviously, the infraction ordinance that the county passed, and the city just passed tonight, are the biggest, most recent news. The only other news, I think, it's not really news to anybody, is that the county remains on the watch list for now, and fire restrictions remain in place at this point until, really until the counties start dropping below those thresholds, and no telling when that might be at this point. The city staff are continuing to work with our customers to establish payment plans for short-term, short-term expansions on our water and sewer accounts. And so we've done many things to make the process easier for customers, so our admin services department and, and my office collaborated to create a simple to-use application, and it's available 24/7 on the city's website, if people are in need of that. On some other matters, so there's a planning commission next, planning commission meeting next week, where they're discussing the, the VMT policy. So this is vehicle miles traveled, right? So the Community Development Department is preparing guidelines for the VMT analysis, instead of using level of service, to analyze projects under SEQA. And this is required per some recent statutes that changed the requirement for SEQA analysis of projects. And the primary motivation to use VMT instead of LOS is to better align transportation impact analysis with the state's and Cattadi's goal, which is to be not passive. You know, in addition to the vehicle miles traveled, which is used for the SEQA analysis, Cattadi will continue to analyze, and the proposal, Cattadi will continue to analyze level of service impacts as part of any project, or certainly any larger project that would require a sort of transportation analysis, because our general plan includes standards for level of service and for level of service, and the level of service still does remain important in evaluating the, the transportation network to make sure that the transportation network actually functions in an acceptable manner, but also determine the nexus for our impact fee program, and also to require railway improvements when projects are anticipated to cause adverse impact to our system. So we're just basically adding VMT in as, as this, as the measuring stick for SEQA, SEQA-related impacts, but we're proposing these to LOS to make sure our transportation will function from the vehicle as well. Cassian Ranch, so sales are underway. Approximately 10 building permits have been issued for new homes, including two model homes, which are currently open and available for tours. An additional five permits are ready to issue based on requests we receive from the developer. And we continue to work with the developer to finalize the affordable inclusionary unit pricing and disposition process, which should be completed this fall. And then also the public improvements associated with the subdivision are nearing completion and should also be finished in the next couple of months. Jamie Lane, the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County is moving forward with preparations for the final map application to complete the subdivision and basically get the project ready to move with building permits. In parallel, Housing Land Trust is continuing to put together the financing options to fund development of the project, so hopefully they're successful in that endeavor to create a workforce affordable housing project there at the corner of Ryan. Cattotti, you're our train station. On the police side of things, I don't know if you, the press release actually just came out this evening right before the meeting, that the, our police recently arrested two individuals from Sacramento who were, who were stealing catalytic converters from cars. Toyota Prius or Prii, I don't know how you say that, seemed to be the primary target. And Cattotti, so in this case, it's kind of interesting because, because of this issue that is not being, it's not only being experienced in Cattotti, but it's really South County issue, so Petaluma, Ranert Park, Cattotti, I'm assuming also Grove and incorporated areas are seeing similar, similar issues of catalytic converter thefts. And these are generally people coming in from Valley or, you know, from out of the area for sure. So because of the known, this kind of known issue, Cattotti PD did some proactive surveillance in a neighborhood south of Myrtle Avenue. And we used an undercover vehicle, a marked unit, and a bicycle unit in about 2:40 in the morning, where they caught the individuals red-handed, so to speak, and arrested them. So it's another great job addressing an ongoing issue, subregion. So kudos to them on that. And then Public Works, as you know, we're wrapping up the William and Olaf Street Sewer Project. It's, it's on track to be complete by the end of this week, and this project corrects existing capacity deficiency as well as providing for future customers. Projects getting started are, that construction is now in its second week on the West School Street Pathway Project out there by Richardson Lane. The project is, is anticipated to extend through the month of August. Based on the approvals tonight, the 2020 Streets Project will be underway and should, will be underway by the end of August, when we should start seeing some construction put out in the field. Also, wayfinding phase two, with tonight's approval, we're going to move forward with the bid documents to prepare phase two of the wayfinding project. And so phase one was a lot of the directional signage that you saw on the streets and also in Redwood Empire Pathway. Phase two is park signs, kiosks with match, you know, for businesses, points of interest, and trails, and the interpretive signs with information on those points of interest in history of Cattotti. So there are seven kiosks along creek trails, five in the downtown area, and 11 park signs. And so phase two is getting as far into that as we can, hopefully completing a lot of it. And then lastly, on the Public Works side of the shop, the city's increasing its rebate amounts for cash for grass, toilets, and other clothes, and clothes washers. And this is under the recently amended grant agreement that we took, that was on the, that was on the agenda. So 100% of these costs are now eligible for reimbursement between now and December 31st. From the city's perspective, 100% of these program costs are reimbursable for the city. So look at the city's website and Water Smart emails for more information from soon. But the, but the rebates amount for the cus, rebate amounts for the customers have increased, you know, lawn replacement, toilets, and washers. So get the word out, we're also doing the same. And then lastly, in recreation, so last week, we finished a successful nine weeks of camp, Cattotti Summer Camp. Campers had a great time over the summer, you know, while following the extra safety precautions and all the CDC guidelines. We look forward to offering more programming for the community, both in person, as permitted, and virtually in the near future. So look for more there. We're also, we also wrapped up the last week of the Redwood Empire Food Bank's free summer lunch program, and we were able to serve 300 lunches to children throughout the summer thanks to this great partnership where Redwood Empire Food Bank delivered the food and city staff managed the pickup and distribution at the community center. The farmer's, the farmer's market season continues to take place each Wednesday afternoon in La Plaza Park from 4:30 to 7:30. Each week, there's multiple fresh fruit, vegetable vendors, hot food options, handmade goods, and more. And as you know, as of tonight, it's now been extended through the end of, it's been extended, I'm sorry, extended one more month. So that's good news for them. And then the Cattotti Ranert Park School District Schools are back in session virtually for now, starting tomorrow. The Recreation Department will once again be working with our high school students in the recreation, hospitality, and tourism focus to provide students with real life experiences. While the interaction will be done primarily online, we expect a lot of great collaborations on projects and programs, and look forward to a great year together. And then finally, you can sign up for all of our programs on the city website, so look for that. You also can contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222, or awilson@catotticity.org, or obviously, as always, you can go to our city website, Facebook page, or Instagram page. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I'll check in with council. Is there any questions for our city manager on his report? Vice Mayor Moore, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Mr. Obed, and maybe Noah might have this information, I was wondering if, if in light of the more restrictive COVID issues, if we had any greater interest in some of the provisions we allowed for under the economic development? For the permitting of parking spaces, et cetera, for the use of those outdoors?
Yeah, no, go ahead and take a crack at that, and if I have anything to add, I'll chime in.
Yeah, thank you, council member. We haven't seen a significant kind of rise in, in inquiries regarding this. What I have seen is people looking for options and exploring all options that are available to them. So you'll start to see more people utilizing outdoor space and probably start to see some other ideas brought forward to the council for consideration and potential, potentially a vote, as we hear more from exactly what our individual businesses' needs are. So you'll recall when we first brought the item, you know, we were kind of shooting in the dark a little bit because we had struggled to engage with our business groups directly, mainly because most of them were still shut. These days, I think just the uncertainty looking forward has caused a lot of folks to hesitate as to how they might be modifying their operations to respond to COVID. So I would say that, combined with the increased flexibility that we have seen around the shelter-in-place health orders, such as allowing, you know, limited numbers of folks into the retail spaces, the restaurant situation has kind of stabilized with a lot of folks being able to at least squeak by on takeout deliveries, and some limited outdoor dining that they put in front of their space, primarily is what we're seeing. But so, sorry for that long answer, but to get back to your question, we haven't seen a significant amount, but we are starting to almost weekly get more and more inquiries about what options there are, and we're trying to really be proactive in giving information to the Chamber of Commerce and other business folks, letting them know that we're open and really interested in discussing any option that folks might have in regards to how they might be able to modify their business operations to be more successful.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and John, I would just add that, I mean, pretty much along the same lines that Noah had said, is while we haven't seen a lot of people actually take advantage of moving into the streets, we haven't seen, most of the, most of the expanded business activities have been in, like adjacent, private parking lots, that sort of thing, where we've worked with businesses. We have had inquiries, we've been, we have been talking to businesses continually as they kind of get a better handle on what they, you know, what their concerns or questions or needs are. And particularly as we move from summer into winter, I think some of those needs might change a bit. So anyway, we're continuing to work, as Noah said, with the chamber and with businesses on what those are. And I would expect another discussion probably in September on, with the council on, you know, what sort of adjustments might exist.
Thank you.
And then I was just gonna say, anecdotally, I've seen two restaurants that have taken advantage of it, Marvin's and Upeblo are the two that I can think of off the top of my head. All right, well, I'm not seeing any more questions, so with that, we'll move on to city council member reports. So we'll start with Councilmember Landman. Have you got anything to report out this meeting?
I will be mercifully brief and have no report tonight, Mayor Skilman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilmember Harvey, have you got anything this week?
Um, I have a couple of things. One, I attended on Saturday, it was really a lot of fun. There was an organized at the Redwood Empire Food Bank about, I don't know, I think there was 45 elected officials. So we spent the morning there at the food bank. So we happened to be on the bagging apples crew, so it was really a lot of fun, a lot of social distancing, really hard in the, in the heat to wear your mask, but we all did it. It was a good time, and hopefully they will set that up for us to do again, because it was really enjoyable. I attended the North Bay Division Meeting, and I already told you about the conference, but we are going to have a virtual North Bay Division Meeting. It'll be our first Zoom Division Meeting, so that ought to be interesting. And it will be on Friday, August 28th, at 11:30 a.m. And Paul Mitchell of Political Data Incorporated is going to go over the 2020 General Election statewide initiatives and kind of give a recap on those. So more details to come on that, but you might want to mark that date on your calendars. Secondly, I chaired the Water Advisory Committee and Technical Advisory Committee on August 3rd, and I won't, there was a lot. It was a very, very long meeting. Everybody was very patient. But the two things that I just wanted to make people aware of is a water supply conditions and temporary urgency change order was put in. So from July now through December, they will be lessening the stream flows because of our water conditions. So you may see less water in the river. And the other thing, and this is kind of for, probably more for Damian, they have done some pretty good public outreach campaigns, and there were some summer ads that were done. And hopefully, we can get those up on either our, our TV channel and/or on our website. But they showed us a couple of them, and they were really quite nice. So hopefully, we can get those out to our folks. And that is all I have for this evening.
Okay, anything from you, Vice Mayor Moore?
No, no, Mayor Skilman, other than the fact that I don't want to see an apple for quite a while. But nothing to report out, thank you.
Okay, perfect. And I'll check in, Councilmember Delosso.
Yes, and I was the third member of the trio that was up on Saturday doing the apple. We had to separate these into three-pound sacks each and then tie a knot. And we, we had an incredibly large container, a commercial container that we filled, but all in all, with all of the electeds, and there were also some former electeds that were there, we provide, well, we packaged 13,000 meals in just under three hours. So it was, it was a great event all around. And, and my back can attest to that, after two days, I felt it. Also, last Friday was the Health Action Council, and there was actually a number of very good, very brief presentations addressing racial equity and COVID-19 disparities from various areas of the county. There were presentations from Windsor, Sonoma, Healdsburg, and a few others. I'm just quickly trying to read through my notes here. And there was just one item that I want to bring to everybody's attention, and I will somehow eventually share this, but there was a piece of artwork that was created by some children, high school age, I believe. And on it, the words read, underneath, "We're all human." And what it is, is a black hand and a white hand and arm outstretched and interlocked, and then bounded by plant material, for lack of a better word. So it was really incredibly well-done and very sensitive. It's a wonderful piece of artwork, and I've already started the process to see if we could get permission, just to even get a copy of it and maybe hang that in City Hall. And once people are allowed to come back in, they'll be able to see that. And that's all I have to report out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I have nothing to report out, and I see Councilmember Harvey, though. You've got your hand up. Is there something to add?
I wanted to add, and I think that Councilmember Landman will appreciate this, while we were over bagging apples, the group from Ranert Park was actually creating the bags, and we did have a little bit of a problem. They kept creating us either bags that were too big or too small. So we did have some quality control issues with them. So I thought you might appreciate that.
I appreciate it very much, but I'll be good and not touch it with the proverbial 10-foot pole tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to item 16, public comment on non-action agenda items. And I'll ask our city clerk if he could check with our two remaining participants if they have any public comment on non-action items tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Marjorie Crumpshires, go ahead.
Hello. Well, I'm still here. And Damian Obed, I was very interested in to hear the first three items that you reported on, except that I could not understand what you said was the first item. And it's late. If I send you an email, I'm hoping you will let me know what those three items were, especially the first one. This has been a very steep learning curve for me, and I appreciate being here and hearing all that you all are dealing with for us in our city. And I thank you. That's it.
Mayor Skilman, that will be a public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. And, and I'll just check real quickly, Lauren, was there anything that was received after the agenda was posted?
No further items.
Okay, well, then I will call this meeting adjourned at 10:00 p.m. Thank you very much, everyone, for your attendance tonight, and be safe out there.